And. And so if you do not want to be recorded, then you would, well, if you want to be recorded, let me be clear, if you want to be recorded, you will push, continue. And if you do not push continue, then Zoom will kick you out. Let me say it again. If you are in agreement to get recorded, you push continue. And if you do not push continue, Zoom will kick you out, it'll drop you. So please make your selections now. And again, I want to ask everybody to mute their mics. I'll be asking everybody to do that again. And so again, one more time, this event is being recorded. And if you want, if you are in agreement to be recorded, then you push continue. You push continue. And if you do not push continue, Zoom will drop you from the, from this gathering. Zoom will drop you from this gathering. Okay. So I want to thank everyone for attending this event today. A special thanks to the planning committee. Also to creative designs by Nella. Nella is the young person who created the flyer for this event. I want to thank the panelists, the candidates, and all the people who are attending this event. Of course, without us combined together, without all of us, this event would not be possible. I'm going to go through the format of the event right now, so everybody can get a flow of what we're going to be doing tonight. Shortly, you're going to see a video after I finish speaking. You'll see a video to get us, to get us in the mood of the event. And then you will hear from the panelists. Young people who are involved in our communities, who are leaders now, they have not waited for the future. And not only are they involved in the future of the city of Detroit, but they're going beyond that. They've taken initiative to be part of our democracy and, and taking responsibility for creating the kind of future that they want for themselves. And those decisions are going to impact them as well as all of us. Want to make sure when our panelists are talking tonight, that we listen to them intently. And we think about what they're saying about their dreams, their visions, their passions, and the things that they're concerned about. And after this event is over with, if you see one of these young people or any young person in our city who's really trying to make a difference and trying to create meaningful efforts in their community to find ways to support them in their efforts. In addition to hearing the young people today, we're going to hear from our candidates. First, our candidates are going to respond to what they hear from the young people. Each candidate will have three minutes to do that. And after that, we'll also hear what our candidates have to say when we have an open Q and A with the audience and everybody that's on this, that's involved in this Zoom event today. We want to encourage you, because this is only one event, we want to encourage you to learn more about our candidates by going to some of the other events that will be happening in Detroit. There was a couple of events today for District Seven candidates, is what's my understanding. And look at their websites, get to know them, get to talk to them. And then lastly, we're going to have a brief closing, and we're going to end on a musical note. So with that being said, let's get the video started for this event today.
There is always a story, and there is always a storyteller. One who must make a choice whether to tell the tale with truth as his only objective or to inject falsities and withhold knowledge for personal motives. For lifetimes, we've been force-fed false stories of identities by storytellers who seek to see us divided, discouraged, and defeated utterly. They told lies, formed stereotypes as they predetermined and formulated the paths of our lives, cast us into roles we'd never sought to audition for, who were roped into realities that were planned long before our thoughts were ever formed. A red line drawn boldly around the perimeters they intended for us to go. And no further than that red line should we have ever known. We wipe it away and create for ourselves a blank page, a clean slate, clear of any limitations or boxes, watching as the sun goes down on tired narratives. New life is breathed into older relatives as the next generation proudly claims our heritage. And I do not say this with arrogance, but my bloodline is not comparative. For it's the sweet songs of my mother that I have inherited, the unwavering courage of my sisters who refuse to be dispirited. The promise of future daughters reaching success is unmerited. As harmful cycles go unrepeated, and your expectations are thinkably exceeded. For we truly are undefeated.
Okay, so next we'll hear from our panel. And we're going to be getting started with Tyler. So Tyler, if you could introduce yourself, and we'll be here listening to you.
Okay, hello, everyone. I hope you have had a wonderful day so far. I am Teylan Hodges. Nice to meet you all. A little intro about me, I am eighteen years old, I'm graduating soon. I'm learning how to play the guitar, I write poetry, I am studying French and Korean, and I like animals. So much effect that I'm going to college to study them. But the most relevant fact about me for tonight is that I am a member of the Cuddy Rouge Youth Council under the Cuddy Rouge Community Action Alliance. I have been working closely with, with government officials, city planners, and community leaders for the past two and a half years on a neighborhood framework project. And having experienced what I have, I have learned how important it was for me to have the position I do. My position has not only helped me grow as a person, gain confidence in public speaking, but has also allowed me to learn about the city and its government and how things work. Before I joined the project that I was working on and am currently working on, I was an introverted, depressed, and slightly socially awkward teen with goals and dreams, but no idea how to achieve them. Now, I'm still pretty introverted, and you guys can determine the social awkwardness for yourself. But I know what I want to do, and I have the ambitions to achieve it. With that being said, as a youth member of District Seven, I would like the new city council member for District Seven to be a community and youth advocate. My community, the Cuddy Rouge and Warren Dale community, has a huge youth population, like one of the biggest in Detroit. So it would be a no-brainer for the youth to be involved with the city and vice versa. If more youth were able to do what I am doing and what I have been doing, we will have a lot more youth leaders ready to make a difference. In fact, we already have youth leaders, but most have no way into getting into leadership roles and no one to lead them. I want there to be more programs like the one I take part in, and I also want there to be more opportunities for youth of many different interests to be able to take part in. I know that if I had access to the talent lessons like at a younger age, I probably would have been on TV right now and doing what I want to do. But that's besides the point. Anyways, as I mentioned, I have been working with the city on a neighborhood framework project for the past few years that just ended its first section. And I have been exposed to all the work, planning, and meetings that take place in the city government. But it's not something that residents just have access to. Because they don't have access to this information, many different residents either aren't aware that the city has been working to better the neighborhood and better the area of living, or they feel like the city doesn't care enough. I want the new city council member to show District Seven residents that they do care, that they are working towards bettering our community. In closing, I wish for there to be close contact with community leaders, planning for programs that help both the city and its residents, and someone who would be there for our youth, involve them in different processes and projects and showing them the way. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Tyler. And so Carlos, you're up next, and you're welcome to turn your camera on if you like.
Hello, everyone. Welcome, and thank you for the invitation. My name is Carlos Correa. A student at U M Flint. Of course, in school, I'm also the vice president of F Y Tech that's foster youth empowering through technology. I wanted to bring and talk about the, to the District Seven into their representative. Like, what are like some possibilities that the youth need to be like, take care of? Like, for example, like, we've been working on like, different services that youth in community is, are not aware of what's going out up there, what's for them. We want more like services, like for them to be aware of what's around them. We want like more events also to show like the youth, the community that they care about, about them. We, we know for a reason, like, there's like a big dream, you know, that every youth has in every member in the community. But the most important is for them to know like where they're going, where the future, who is holding the future, and what they can do with the talent in different places that are around them for them to know and grow up in the community. A lot of youth like in community like want to take place in, for like representative, for them to like stop out and represent them, because that's why they are there, you know? Yeah, we want like for the community, like city bus where youth can use it and like, you know, go to different places where they can like grow up, you know, like the library, like places that can be beneficial for them, like go to the Secretary of State to go to like places where they can grow. So that's like one petition, and I hope that is great for the community. Yeah, that's. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Carlos. Appreciate your, all your words. I want to just check and see if Justin, Eli, Elam are speaking, Justin?
It's Morgan Ely.
Okay, it was a different name there. Is that Morgan there? Morgan, is that you?
This is Justin. I don't know if Morgan is on or not. I am not speaking today.
So, so at this point, is, we have two young, young people who have spoken. And so we want to take some time to respond to what you've heard so far. We're going to have the candidates respond. And if another young person comes to join us, if they come in late, I know we have, at least one person has shared, they were going to, a person's shared that they're going to be coming in late or later on. If they come in, we'll try to have them say some words before we end the session.
Morgan is coming on now.
Okay.
She was in the room earlier, so I don't know if she left, I guess.
Okay, let's give her a little time to get on.
Hello.
Hey, hey, Morgan.
Hi.
How are you?
I'm fine.
I'm fine, thank you. So we're so excited to hear what you would like to share with us. And so you're really next up to speak. So if you want to introduce yourself and the organization that you represent, and we're ready to hear your presentation once you're ready.
Okay, well, my name is Morgan Ely. I'm here with Park West, the entrepreneur, young entrepreneurship group. And I'm about, I'm telling you guys my goals and stuff, right?
Yep, again, you're going to share your goals, your visions, your concerns that you may have as a young person, some of your dreams, something you expect from your city councilperson.
Okay, well, my goals are to start my own fashion line starting my own fashion line, create clothes for the community that they're own ideas. So I'm recreating things that they give me. And then I would like to start a mommy and me clothing line so the mothers can match their daughters or their sons. And it's not so feminine as it is right now in the world of fashion. But other than fashion, I do do music. I would like my music all around the world. And other than that, just making sure that my kids, you know, never have to worry about anything, creating, you know, revenue for them that they won't have to worry about anything but getting the education and making sure that money grows. I have my goal, I mean, I do want the council people to look at the fact that I didn't, I don't have a mother or dad, so I don't have anybody to call on when I need help after I age out of the foster care system. I'm pretty much by myself. So everything I've gotten since twenty-one pretty much is all me. I have to maintain it, keep it going, and do everything. So when I fall, people, even like the government will look at you wrong. Like, I'm going through a custody battle with my son. I can't, I did nothing wrong, but I fall victim without having any support system. So they won't even allow him to come back home with me because I have the lack of support to show the court that, okay, I have this brother, I have the family that I gathered through the community because it takes a village. So I gathered a village, but the village is not good enough because we're not blood or because of the fact that I'm a ward of the state. So with, the council people do need to look at the, I want to, maybe the age cutoff. I think we should, pretty, yeah, the age cutoff isn't too, is just like, that's not even that far from eighteen. So it's like, you're basically doing what the parents do anyway, by kicking them out at twenty-one or twenty-seven now, I believe, twenty-six. But that's what I want the council people to look at for that. I have been working on my goals. And just therapy, I feel like black kids run away from therapy, but therapy was great for me, other than the fact that all the therapists kind of abandon you after their sessions, and you never talk to them again. But if you had built a relationship with the therapist when you're three, because they're in your family, because of the situation that you're going through, it would make you feel like, okay, I have a lifelong friend, this is someone I can always talk to about it. But when you have, okay, oh, she's not on your case anymore, and this person is not on your case anymore, that's creating more abandonment issues for the child than in the beginning. Like, they're already going through the mom not being there, and the dad not being there, and then the social worker or the child case manager is on it, and then they're, oh, they're got fired, or they're no longer there. So now the people who were close to this person, they are like, dang, they left me. They didn't even care to even say bye, but it wasn't even them. It's, I believe it's rules where they can't even do that stuff and stuff. So it's like making sure that you're not doing what the system already is set up to try to prevent because creating abandonment issues, that's one thing that I feel like I faced a lot, and I have still facing it because I have never felt stable, other than the people that I bring into my life. And then just to make it the cutoff of the ages, like, like I said, I don't have a mother or dad. So when I fall, if I don't have anybody to call on, like, I can call my friends, but they're like, call your mom, call your dad, or call somebody that's a relative. So it's like, that's one thing we need in the community, I mean, the council people need to look on. My goals, I, I kind of touched on that, starting my own clothing line. I want to write a book about my situation in foster care and get my story out. If I can't get it through music, I'm going to try one of the other avenues, acting. I'm going to do pieces in my book, other than my book, my music. It's like, I'm going to make sure that it's told. What else? That's pretty much it to me. I really don't have a lot more else to say. Anybody else?
Okay, so we're going to have a chance for the the candidates to respond shortly. Morgan, and then after that, we're going to have open Q and A.
And Can I, excuse me?
Yes.
Can I have like time to add something else?
Absolutely. One minute, please, Carlos. Morgan, were you finished, Morgan? Or did you have anything else you wanted to add before I go back to Carlos?
I think I said everything I wanted to say. I hope I don't, I hope I did.
I'm on a Zoom call.
There's a lot of more stuff. I think, I don't know. I think I said everything. My main topics.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Carlos. You wanted to add something, Carlos?
Yes, thank you. Also, like for a petition that I wanted is for to like youth in community to get like, you know, jobs, like employment through like Michigan Works or like other type of, you know, like for jobs, like jobs more available, like not only restaurants, but like not fast food, but like also like on business, you know, to teach them how the upside work, you know, really works, because I believe that we are the youth, the next generation. So I really wanted to encourage that to do like more in for high schoolers to, you know, who graduate to have that opportunity, not only to work on restaurants, on fast food, but also to go on the career that they wanted, you know? And like, and study those, like, you know, upside work, because I believe that a lot of colleges, either when they graduate in foster care or any type, they don't get a job that they wanted with the career that they're building on. Or it's like they have the job, but it's, you know, they don't have a job, like stuff. So the job don't provide that. And it's like, there's not a lot of opportunities on those types or areas to get a job that it's according to your major or according to your high school that you wanted to do. So my petition is for, for doing that, like either, like, you know, for high schools to do an internship and go to like factories, you know, a business, entrepreneur, to learn more about that. You know, and for big business to go outside and present the youth, the community, what they're working on, and how they can develop that, the same thing. And even like in college, you know, because that's the thing, like a lot of like college, especially youth, like they are afraid of that, like, you know, going into the major and go outside to the real world and like, I'm outside, now what? I got this paper, they, I can use it, you know, I still can use it and introduced to a company, but it's not enough because I don't have the skills, you know? So it's just a paper. So, yeah, that's my petition to the, thank you so much for the extra time.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Thank you so much. Thank you all for sharing and presenting. And so we want to take some, we want to take some time right now to hear from our, to hear from our candidates. And so candidates, this is the way we're going to do it. We're going alphabetically by last name. And so I'm giving you a little time as I'm going down the list, to give you a little time to kind of collect some of your thoughts. But we have Mr. Bennett first, then Mr. Durohall, and then I think it's Maria, Maria. And then we have Ms. Ross and Ms. Webb. If it's any other candidates, I did not see you on the screen. So those are the candidates that I am seeing here right now. So we're going to start with Mr. Bennett, and we're asking each candidate to take about three minutes or so to respond to something that you heard from our panelists. And we'll start with you, Mr. Bennett. Your mic is, your mic, your mic is off, and please introduce yourself again, your whole name and your correct pronunciation, just in case. Thank you.
Computer challenged at times. Can you hear me? Okay. Well, once again, thank you all for this opportunity. Thank the panel and thank the host for the opportunity to come and speak. Again, my name is John Bennett. I'm a candidate for City Council, District Seven. I really wanted to just come and listen and, and, and hear what our young people had to say. I realize I'm from a different generation, but I'm not disconnected from the issues that we share, having grown up in the city of Detroit, been here all my life, and I realized it was a different time. But when I was growing up, there were some more things for the, my generation to do, young people to do in our community. And, but we know that times have changed and things are different, but we still struggle with some of the same issues that we had when I was a young man growing up in the city. I joined the police department in nineteen ninety-six for one reason and one reason alone. I felt like if you're going to address the problems that we have, you have to be in the game in order to do that. Sitting on the sideline does not address those issues. Over my lifetime, I've been a mentor for thirty-plus years because I felt like we, I needed to have a connection to the young people in our community and to assist them in every way that I can. I've been a part of a lot of mentoring programs, been active in the community and trying to help young people get to where they were going in the system in any way that I could, having grown up in a family of eleven and being the youngest. You know, I know how challenging it could be if you don't necessarily have the support mechanism there. And listening to the young people tonight, what I'm hearing is that there's no leadership roles for young people in our community, and that's been true for a long time. And that's something that, that needs to change, and there has to be a greater emphasis on mentoring young people so they can take that next step. And one of the questions I have, and maybe we can get to that at some point, my question for young people that I've been asking for a while is, what is it we need to do? My question for young people that I've been asking for a while is what is it we need to do? In the city of Detroit to keep you here? What can we do as a city? To make this Detroit a place where you want to stay and grow and raise a family? And for me, I look at safety as, as paramount to all of our concerns. We have to make our community safe. We have to make it walkable. We have to make it livable. We have to make people feel comfortable in our community. So I know safety is a primary thing. But what other things can we do? Can I do as a leader if I'm elected to City Council? To make this community a place where you want to stay and raise your family? I know a lot of people leave, they go to other places and they don't return. But we have a, a, a vacuum there in terms of young people being a part of leadership and, and being a part of the administration. And I want to make sure in my administration that there are young people who are part of my team. From start from day one. So, but my question, and hopefully we can get to it at some point. Is what is it we can do? What is it I can do in my role? Should I be elected to City Council to keep young people here, to make this a place where they want to be, want to stay? And grow and raise a family? So I'll stop right there and um, and hang around to entertain any questions. Uh, that any of the panelists may have for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bennett. And then also, I forgot to miss, mention to everyone, we have, we have an official timer. Uh, we have an official timer and uh, and facilitator. She'll be the facilitator of our uh, question answer. That's Shay Howe. So if you hear her say time, um, we would just ask you to kind of wrap up your last thoughts. And then we'll move on to the next question or the next person. Okay, so Mr. Duhall, you're next.
First, let me say good evening to everyone uh, on the call and thank you for having me uh, on this forum today. Uh, it is a pleasure to uh, be here particularly with a lot of our young folks. Uh, one of the things that I want to address, obviously first, let me thank Morgan and Carlos and all the young folks who have been on this call. Uh, and it gives me hope, uh, gives me hope for the future. Uh, but I don't want to talk about, you know, uh, what we can do. I want to kind of talk about what we're going to do. Uh, when I hear Morgan talk about her wanting to start her own fashion line, right, and mommy and me clothing line. Or uh, when she wants to make sure that kids get an education, not worry about anything else. That's something that lets me know that our young people are thinking. Uh, and so as I go on this campaign trail, one of the things that I've been talking about is building entrepreneurship programs. Something that has not been done in this city in a very long time, investing in our young folks. Uh, and that involves not only apprenticeships, uh, apprenticeships or skilled trades. That can be infused within Detroit Public Schools by partnering with the city of Detroit and using funds from our budget to do so. But that also involves this leadership in the community and bridging that gap. Building a community center, building a health and wellness center where we have programs that encourage these types of programs. Uh, you know, when I hear Morgan talk about no mom or dad, my heart goes out to you. Uh, cause there are, there are tons of uh, children and, and kids and teenagers. Uh, throughout our city that experience what you, what you go through, even as far as the custody battle. Uh, and no support system. But as leaders and particularly in city, city government, as we establish these programs. It's our job to ensure that you're taken care of. It's our job as a community, as a business, to ensure that we wrap our arms around you. We build wraparound programs. So you can be able to sustain yourself and be the best that you can be. Uh, and so I do think therapy needs to be more accessible as well. Uh, and, and that's not just for a lot of our youth, but that's just for people in general. Mental health is one of the biggest issues that we face here in our state. So when I become Detroit City Council member in District Seven, that's something that I'll focus on and putting dollars in. Uh, I thought Carlos, you know, again, thank you for sharing your story and, and what you care about. Uh, you talk about the youth getting jobs, right? I, I think that is something that is very important. Our youth getting jobs, that goes back to our apprenticeship program. Everybody's not gonna go to college. And that's something that we've got to realize here. We've got one of the largest retiring populations, the baby boomers here within the state of Michigan. And we've got to have folks who are qualified and taught to fill those jobs. And that's something that we can do. Uh, with our youth by building those apprenticeship programs and coming into our schools and teaching at a, at a younger age. Uh, and then big businesses. I mean, we've got jobs of the future that also involve clean energy, right? We've got to start employing those, whether it's through vocational schools, VOTEC, you know, something like David Aerospace, building those partnerships. Uh, and then we've got to make college obviously affordable as we can. That's partnering with our local community colleges as well, like we have the Detroit Promise. Dylan with WC Three, to ensure that if you do want to go to college, you have the ability to be able to do that and there are funds available uh, to do that. But I love this spirit and entrepreneurial uh, spirit that I've heard tonight from you guys. Because it lets me know that our campaign, my mind state is on the right track when we talk about building these programs for you. You guys are the future. I'm thirty-seven years old. I'm one of the youngest candidates in this race. Although you guys may consider me old now, a lot of the folks that are older than me can still consider me young. Uh, but what I can tell you is I understand you and, and where you come from. As I sit and I mentor and I talk to a lot of you. So I'm looking forward to serving you guys down there and we're working and partnering with you. And again, thank you tonight for sharing your stories.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duhall. All right, I noticed that Mr. Davis came in. We'll put him on the uh, at the, after Ms. Webb at the end here. And so next we'll, I'll continue down the line, Ms. Maria. I think, I don't know if I'm saying that correct, but Erica.
You are, you are. Thank you so much. Um, I find it a privilege to actually be here. Um, thank you for sharing your, your stories. Um, sharing lived experiences and storytelling is so powerful. And the work that I do as a national consultant on the intersection of domestic violence and the child welfare system. Our priority is reimagining the policies that affect Detroit residents. Um, so I also understand firsthand um, of Morgan's circumstances. Being a teen mom myself, I had my oldest daughter when I was seventeen years old. College wasn't, you know, the first thing that I was able to do. I'm still in school. Um, I'm thirty-seven years old. My daughter, my oldest daughter is twenty. Um, but navigating through Detroit can be really hard, especially when you're experiencing so many hardships. Myself, I've experienced homelessness as a teen mom, trying to quote unquote, work first. Um, and then the systemic policies that are set up to hold us back. Are some of the main issues here in Detroit that prohibit our youth from moving forward and accomplishing goals. I'm also an entrepreneur. I um, founded a nonprofit organization called Supreme Transitions. Um, and we assist community members and youth and accomplishing their goals and becoming totally self-sufficient. We do a more in-depth intake system because. A lot of these programs pretty much have a cookie cutter approach, but that doesn't work, just like Morgan said. So finding out what are all of the issues on the spectrum that are holding people back from accomplishing their goals and attaining total wellbeing. Is huge for me because I'm a survivor of homelessness, um, dealing with the front of the court. Dealing with the child welfare system. And I am also evidence that you can overcome those things. I'm living proof that no matter what life is throwing at you. If you have mentors such as people like myself and community volunteers, you can accomplish those goals. Nothing's too hard. Um, if, if you have a roadmap. So I think it's very important um, that with the diversity in our community. That myself as a city council person, be able to help bring those voices like those shared today. To the table and create real change. But we can in, uh, incorporate all of these things to improve what we have. If we can reimagine what my childhood was like. And being able to go to the rec center for hot lunch and um, programs and empowerment and education services or VOTEC, right? What Carlos mentioned. My daughters attend um, a very diverse school here in District Seven. So understanding that everybody doesn't go to college. Some people do go, some people don't go all the way. And so figuring out how do we bring more skilled trade back to District Seven where we used to have facilities. Um, in, on hubbo and walking distance on bus routes? How do we get the funding back into those programs? So that's very important to me because this is my reality. I'm not just a politician. I'm sorry. I'm not just someone that's a politician that makes promises. I understand what it feels like to be a community member. And to carry a baby on your hip and to not qualify for this service or that service. But those are the things that empower me. To create my own. My daughters both are entrepreneurs. One is twenty, one is fourteen.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Maria. And next we have um, Ms. Ross.
Hello, everyone. I'd like to, I'd like to first thank you for having this program. Um, at first, when I heard about it, I was like, I'm not sure what kind of program is this? But I uh, I have to say to you, I am glad that you put this together. Uh, I, it gave me more insight on some of the things that I am doing. And uh, for me, when uh, Morgan was talking about her life. Morgan, Carlos and um, Tayen, I don't know if I'm pronouncing it right. Tayen, all of you, you can, you have already started your careers. What you're doing, you can continue. I know you're talking about District Seven, but you can continue wherever you like to continue. Um, for me, you can start with me today in doing some things. I am the Director of Carrie's Corner. That is a community group. You can start there. I am a certified teacher. Uh, if you need tutoring or help in, or other needs. And like uh, Morgan was talking about the therapy, we had a meeting this, this uh, earlier today and we were talking about therapy. And how more people uh, will be needing therapy because of the COVID uh, situation. So, uh, and, and I like how Morgan said that she had gone to, to therapy. So uh, there's nothing wrong with going to therapy and I like how she talked about her business and her, and having. Uh, I don't know if she has one child or more, but I thought that was great too. So it's a lot of things that, that we're going to do with you in District Seven. But there's things that we don't have to wait until I'm elected City Council District Seven. We can start now. My phone number is area code three one three, three ten nine three six four. Or you can go on my website and um, you can be a part of our, our team. We have a lot of things that you can do. Uh, let's see, what else? Carlos talked about going to school, training and finding a job. One of the things that, that I have a partnership with uh, Detroit Public Schools and the UAW. We are uh, we're negotiating, we're in the works of putting the program together in the DPS, Detroit Public School System. And it's going to be a training program for uh, for the high school students. They'll, they'll do the apprenticeship in high school and then they'll move on as soon as they graduate from high school. They'll have uh, skills, skill trades. So they'll have a job. And for my younger students from uh, grades K through. Eighth grade, they'll be in STEM programs. And that will be getting them ready for when they get to high school for the apprenticeship program. So yes, there's opportunities out there. There's a lot of things that we're going to do in District Seven. It's a new day, it's a new time and we're gonna make a difference. So um, feel free to contact me and I forgot to give you the website. The website is RossForDetroit.com. So, oh, okay. Did you say time? Okay, I'll stop there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Ross. So next we have Ms. Webb.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. Um, my name is Angie Webb and I serve in District Seven. I've actually both lived in District Seven all of my life. And I was pretty much born in the area. I started out in the area of um, Dexter and Elum Hurst where I was raised. And then I, my mother moved to Manor and Joy Road and I now live on the front line in Joy Road. So I've always stayed in the area. I started the Joy Community Association about twenty years ago. And I actually was working with Taylin on the neighborhood framework as one of our neighborhoods. And uh, she is a star in our community for sure. I would love to have many more like her. Um, I'm always looking for young people to serve on the Joy Community Association uh, Board and Organization. We trying to do what we can to build our community and, and um, build for programs as well. And I think programs are so important for our youth in order to prepare them for leadership. And then also being able to get them involved in things that will put them in the forefront. And I know that strategic framework definitely did that for them, that were involved. And I would love to see more opportunity like that for our young people. I also know that uh, the young woman that, that I think her name was Morgan that talked about therapy. We have what is called uh, CNS Services in our community on Joy Road and Greenfield. And they are free services as well for people that are uninsured. So I'm just hoping that people are taking advantage of this um, opportunity in our community. Because it's, it's very limited in other areas, whereas we have it here. And um, I know that they are in other areas like Southfield and Livonia. So to be able to have it in Detroit in our area, I think is a shining light for what we need right now. For both our young and our old. But I do believe that um, it's important to, to invest in our young people. I actually worked for American Lung Association for years as a tobacco specialist. And one of the things that I would always talk about was not, uh, are young people not getting involved in smoking? Due to peer pressure. And so that was something that kind of, um, I guess you could say, we, we talked about the mental part of it. And I also was involved with um, Dom Bosco Hall. I worked with them for five years. And I worked with them to be able to work with youth in the community and their families to have programs. So I know what it takes to get programs started in the community. And I know the importance of programs in the community. And finally, I, okay, I, I just wanted to wrap it up. Finally, I just wanted to say that. Career placement is going to be a key thing in my uh, effort with young people. Because I know that not only training is important, but commu- career placement is important. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. So um, we have Mr. Davis. He should be the last um, candidate to respond to the young, what young people. Um, talked about and I don't, I don't see any other candidates, so we will um, let Mr. Davis speak now.
Hello, what, what's the question? So can you repeat the question?
Yeah, so we had actually the young people presented. And um, people were responding to um, what they heard from the young, uh, from our panelists. So I think he came in after. And so what I really think I want to suggest. Unless you just want to make some general comments, but uh, for your three minutes, um, you can either make the general comments or. We can go into Q and A and you can uh, hear more from young people and everyone and get involved in the conversation.
Well, I, I think I could, I could, you, you, I used to three minutes by making some general comments as relates to young people. Uh, well, as it relates to young people, uh, I have two adult sons in their twenties. And I have a grandson that's six years old. Um, I, I think that young people, not just in District Seven, but all of the city. We make sure that we have recreational opportunities, need to have playgrounds, we need to have training. You know, we have a lot of people, a lot of young people, they're not reading and writing on the correct grade level. We need to make sure college is more affordable. We need to make sure that we don't have these huge tremendous college debt. And I worked my way through college. I, I worked for the city charter for thirty-four years in the water department. I started as a helper. Which meant they gave me a shovel when I first came in. I ended up managing the wastewater treatment plant. But you know, we need to make sure that young people have the same opportunities that I had back in seventy-eight when I started with the city of Detroit. Cause probably many young people today do not have no expectation of being able to get a pension, you know? E- even though mine was attacked and cut by emergency management. But you know, they need to make sure they have some idea of there's some. Future. We, far too often, you know, people nowadays, they stay at a job just for a few years and move on and move on. We want to make sure that our young people get the training, have the education and have the resources. That their parents and grandparents had. Cause this is a, a strange time in the city of Detroit. Whereas we have people like when I went to school, you know, we had all sorts of classes and training and what have you. But I don't think as much, as much stuff is being offered to our young people today as it just was. I think the city of Detroit was designated, especially by state government, starting with Governor Snyder in the nineteen nineties by taking over our school system. You know, we want to make sure that young people are able to go to gym, able to go swim, have an appreciation of art. I want to make sure that they are exposed to as many things as some of us was.
When we say homes, we make sure we say single family.
That's, that's it.
Alone with, you know, affordable housing.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Davis. It's somebody's, I'm looking at all the phones. So, everybody, please make sure your phones are muted. As I'm looking, they all appear to be muted. But it was, sorry about that, Mr. Davis. There was a conversation kind of in the background of you. So, I did get a, a chat. In the chat, I did find out that Ms. Underwood is here. Ms. Underwood, would you like to speak now? Ms. Underwood?
That's actually whose voice I heard.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. The scheduling is horrible. It's two candidate forms, and I'm trying to work both of them. So, I apologize. I missed half of the things that were, were, were said. So, I didn't hear the question.
So, hey, so Ms. Underwood, what you missed was a presentation. You missed a presentation by our young people. That was part of our format. And now, we're gonna, we're getting ready to go into Q and A soon. But if you would like to make any just general comments as pertains to young people, you're welcome. Or we can go straight to Q and A where you can get some direct questions. But people were responding to what they heard from the panel.
Okay, thank you. I love the youth. I have, I'm the founder of Detroit Black Women Council. I'm working with young mothers under the age of forty with their children. So, anything that highlights the youth, our baby, our children is our future. So, I'm sorry I missed the presentation. I'm pretty sure it was really great, and I'm looking forward for the Q and A.
All right, so thank you, Ms. Underwood. So, now it's the, this portion of our conversation event today is now Q and A. So, Shay, Shay Howe is going to lead us in that Q and A. Shay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Kim, and thank you for the panelists and to the candidates for talking about this. So far, I have one person who has raised their hand. And you can ask questions in a number of ways. One, you can go to the bottom of your screen, and there's a little button that says reaction. And if you press on that button, if you are able to see the full screen, one of the choices would be to raise your hand. So, that's one way. The second way is you can try showing your picture and waving your hand. And the third way is you can simply put your name in the chat, and then I would, we'll call on you. And you can raise the question to all candidates or to a specific candidate. And candidates after, if a person is directly addressed, if you want to then add to that, you can certainly feel free. And we have about a half hour. So, if everyone would be just mindful of the time with each other. Right now, the only person I have with a question is Marilyn with the iPad. So, Marilyn, you want to ask your question? You should unmute yourself for that.
Hi, this is Marilyn Winfrey from the Northwest Community Black Club Association. And I just want to say thanks to the young people for the great presentation and the great expressions that they did. And to the young man who said they're the next generation, that is no longer true. They are the generation of today because this pandemic has taught me that we need one another in order to move through. So, don't think of yourselves as a generation of tomorrow. We all need to learn to work together now and understand one another. Now, my question is to Mr. Du Hall and to Ms. Webb. Based on your review of District Seven as a whole, do you feel funds, grants, et cetera, are being equally or fairly distributed throughout the district? If yes, explain. If no, or not sure, tell us what you would do to make every effort to ensure that equality exists throughout District Seven.
Thank you, Marilyn. And I will go in reverse order because I'm sure Ms. Webb often gets stuck in the last one. So, Ms. Webb, why don't you go first on that question of grants and resources to District Seven, and then Mr. Durhill?
Okay, yes, I do feel like they have not been distributed equally. I, I remember a time when the NFO funds were available for home repair grants so that people in the community could use those funds to get homes that needed work done. And now they're saying that it is turned into a loan with a zero interest. And it's seem like you have to go through an approval process that is almost impossible. A lot of people don't have insurance, from what I've been told. And a lot of people don't have the credit rating to be able to get what is needed for these funds either. So, for that reason, I think, no, it is not fair that people have to be, I guess you could say, punished for poverty at a level that, that they, they are in at no fault of their own. Many times, people are just struggling to, to make it. And to get that extra help can make a difference for them. So, that's where I stand on that. And that's not just with NFO funds. That's with pretty much a lot of the funds out there. But I'm going to just stick with that.
And what would you do if you were elected?
Oh, I would definitely try and do everything possible to change that because I was totally against it when it happened. So, that would be one thing that I would attack. And then I'd start working on other areas where money has been distributed and in areas unfairly, in my opinion. It seems like there should be more of an equal level throughout the city. And I'm not just talking about in my area. I'm talking about throughout the city. There are, it seems to be certain areas that get more money than other areas. I want that to change. If people are able to apply for grant funds and they need those funds, I think that we need to be able to make sure that they get them.
Thank you.
And Marilyn, if you, we'll let Mr. Durhall next. Will you also ask directly for that?
Yes.
I was coming off another forum. Could you repeat the question one more time? I'm sorry.
The question was, based on your review of District Seven as a whole, do you feel that funds, grants, et cetera, are being equally and fairly distributed throughout the district? If yes, explain why you feel that way. If no, or not sure, tell me what you would do, or tell us what you would do to make every effort to ensure that equality exists throughout District Seven when it comes to funding and grants, or any type of financial resources?
Right, right. So, I mean, the answer to that is no, you know, which is one of my decisions why I've decided to run for Detroit City Council. As I look around our district, our district has been one of the last districts to be touched as it relates to new development, as it relates to abandonment and structures being torn down. Homes that have been on the demolition list since 2013 have not been taken care of. And so, as far as funding coming to our district, there has been some funding, I can say. But obviously, it needs to be increased. District Seven, besides District Three, I believe, in the city of Detroit, which is on the east side, is one of the most poverty-stricken districts. When you look at the demographic and the income levels and the challenges that our residents face. And so, what I would do when I'm elected to Detroit City Council, obviously, as the councilman for District Seven, is to ensure that our funds will come and directly be appropriated to our district. And doing that involves a couple of, a couple of ways to be able to do that. First, we've got to be able to collaborate. We're one member of Detroit City Council if you're elected, and we've got to understand that. So, you have to, you know, basically collaborate, I'm sorry, collaborate with all the rest of the city council members to ensure, when it comes to the budget, that those fundings go to your district. And that involves, obviously, building those type of relationships and letting them know the needs of our residents, particularly in District Seven. So, that's one, funding it through our city budget. But as, you know, another thing that we have to do in what leadership involves is building partnerships with the philanthropic community. There are a lot of philanthropic, you know, entities, or a lot of programs, or 501(c)(3) and nonprofits that operate already throughout District Seven. We've got to find a way to help them get grants, whether it's on a state level, whether it's on the federal level, to be able to bring funding down there and work in partnership with the city and some of those 501(c)(3)'s that already exist. Such, you know, you've got Joyce South. I mean, I can go on and on. You guys know the community groups because you guys are part of it, you know? You know, over there with Carl and Rippling Hope, like, you know, these are programs and community groups that are instrumental in our community. So, what I would do is place my focus on working with these community groups, ensuring that we get funding throughout our budget, ensure that we build partnerships with our philanthropic partners and businesses and corporations throughout our city to make sure that our district gets the attention that it needs.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I also see that Erica Morais, as one of the candidates, wants to speak. And I want to remind folks that unless you've just put up your high school pictures, it looks like there are some young folks. If you have questions, you should feel free to, to ask those. Just raise your hand or put them in the chat. Ms. Morais?
Thank you. And so, my last name is actually pronounced Maria.
Oh, Maria.
Yes. And so, I wanted to respond to that. That's an awesome question. I currently serve as a consultant on a national level, another contract, working with FIPSA and grants and grantees, right? And making specific asks. So, you have to be able to be in the room at some of these tables and have and cultivate relationships. So, working with the Michigan Prevention Board, Debbie Kane, the Michigan Coalition to Endomestic Violence, and some of these other state and national levels that have the funds, you have to be able to directly ask. And at our last grantees meeting, it was my recommendation directly that grassroots agencies start receiving funding because we have boots on the ground. And so, a lot of the mainstream organizations that are regularly funded, they don't necessarily meet the needs directly. So, you have to be able to, one, have relationships, cultivate relationships, and know how to disperse those funds and be bold enough to hold people accountable. Even in the past four years, our current mayor held several community forums and made some promises. And so, we need to revisit those promises to make sure that our district and our state receive the funds that were previously talked about, and primarily in District Seven, like Ms. Webb mentioned, Dom Bosco Hall. We have some gems and jewels in District Seven that need direct funding, that have great people, that have boots on the ground, and are not afraid to roll up their sleeves. But people like myself that stay with one foot in community and one foot at the partnership tables on a larger level, understand the necessity and how to distribute those funds and directly ask for what we need and hold people accountable.
Thank you, Ms. Marie.
Maria.
Maria, Ms. Maria.
Two first names, Erica Maria.
Erica Maria. And I have Allison Andrews as a questioner, and Morgan. So, if we could hear Alyssa.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
And then we'll go to you. Hi, Alyssa.
Hello. So, I had a question for Erica Maria. You mentioned something when you were speaking about how you can overcome and accomplish your goals with a role model. How do you feel like the youth can be involved in becoming, you know, like having more leadership roles in their communities?
Again, you have to have somebody invite you to these tables. One, I have an event that's coming up that I've been asked to speak at on June twenty-sixth. And so, I do want to sponsor tickets for all of the youth that are here that want to pursue entrepreneurship and skills trades. I can provide that information to the organizer of this event where I will be speaking on how to connect with mentors and those resources and build out your business plan.
That sounds amazing.
Yeah, you're welcome. So, I've been doing this forever. Like I said, I grew up with my daughter. I'm thirty-seven. My oldest daughter is twenty. So, I'm used to having a house full of kids, girls, and just figuring out what it is that you're really interested in and your passion, and then helping you build out the model to become a complete entrepreneur. And just have the blueprint ready. That's what I call it, the blueprint. I am a J.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the question. Ms. Underwood, you want to go ahead, and then we'll go to Morgan?
Okay, thank you. I think that's a very important topic about the nonprofit work in District Seven throughout the whole city. But I hear that's one of the major complaints amongst neighborhood black club presidents and leaders is that is money coming in. So, I want to stress that. Is money coming in to District Seven through nonprofits? Is, a lot of the residents do not know what resources is available. They also don't understand how to apply. So, if I'm elected to be the councilperson of District Seven, I'm actually, I want to create an ordinance around making sure that all these nonprofits is registered and also do a monthly report on the nonprofits that is actually in our district and, and resources that's available and how to get in touch with the leaders of those organizations. Because I plan on working with them because that's one of the big divides in District Seven. You know, regardless if you living over there in the Wyoming, Plymouth area, Franklin Park area, or the far west community. It's, it's an issue with that. I, I received that. And when I hopefully become councilwoman of District Seven, I have a plan to address that. And I think an ordinance will be important, not just for District Seven throughout the whole entire city, as well as I plan on hiring a grant person on staff to actually write up those grants so we can try to get direct funding to some of these grassroots organizations. Because I, I run a nonprofit organization that's grassroots. And I, I self-fund and raised my money through the people because the grants is just not big enough to us. So, those are things that I will act on if elected as councilwoman of District Seven. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Morgan and then Mr. Davis. Morgan?
Yes, okay. What, okay, I had a couple of topics. I wanted to talk about, I left out one thing, but I think Maria, Ms. Maria, has said something about it, which was mentoring. That's what I left out. That's a big thing that we need. And I was going to ask all the people who are running for council, how would you be willing to bring on people, bring on youth that are interested in being councilmen or running for president or anything in that field? Because mentors, that's the number one. Reading these books I'm reading are teaching me mentorship and spreading the word through the wisdom of the older people given to the youth is what needs to happen, coming together like that. Because if I sit and see that you allowed me to learn this, and you are just like me, and we're, we just came from the same place, I feel like I can make it. We don't have any mentors in the community anymore, like the situation. Someone had Joe Duma, I think they had mentioned a little, like, Boys and Girls Club. I see they're getting tore down. There is no place for any kids to go. So, if you're in foster care and you're running away from home, normally, you can go to the park, meet up with your friends, and think about going back home. But now, you don't have nowhere to go. You're out here in the streets. So, you need some mentor you can run to that you know that's going to be there. Either is your person working over your case, or is the person that you introduced to during a job or a sit-down, like you said, you're inviting people to, Ms. Maria. Like that sit-down, just being around those people and motivates you to do more things in your community and get involved. But I feel like you need to talk to the youth and have them on your team as well to know what you're doing for the youth. Because you can't say, oh, I know what to do when stuff has changed, situations changed. The, the way to get money from people have changed. You can't even say the same thing. There are so many sway, their system set up against us getting the money. We have to learn how to get through those systems to get that money. So just being around the people and learning how they're going, because the youth can be like, hmm, maybe if you do it like this. Because I also wanted to talk about, someone said it's a lot of resources. A lot of you said it's a resources out here and I don't know nothing about these and I wish I did. How are you reaching the youth? Because it's not, you're not going out trying to reach older people because they're on, they're going to know about it. They're researching it. Youth need to be woken up like, oh, this is a picture of a cartoon, but it's talking about, hey, you want to be a leader? Come here on Tuesday. And it's colorful and it's amazing. We need that type of stuff because youth are not looking at that. We need Facebook people, a social media team set up with the council people that's reaching out to the youth. All youth working on that.
Thank you, Morgan.
They know how to get to the youth.
So yeah, Morgan, I totally agree.
Erica, can you just, Mr. Davis has been waiting. If we can let him get first. And then I have Ms. Underwood and then you can go and then Carlos.
Sure.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. You know, I think that we as mature people should be doing more to help and assist the youth in our community. You know, their future started yesterday, you know, you know, they, we need to make sure if we don't develop and have young people able to do things and understand things, you know, who's going to help us when we advance even more in years? Once I become the next Detroit City Council for District Seven, I will take full use of the Citizen Advisory Council. I used to be the chair for University City Assistant District Council. And the Citizen Advisory Council, they have a youth component and, you know, this appointee and also a senior appointee. You know, I think we need to take advantage of some of the stuff that's available. And I don't think that was ever fully implemented and fully utilized in District Seven. Even though District Seven was one of the first ones. I think we have a whole lot of programs, a whole lot of ideas, and we have information that needs to be shared. Far too often, we have too few people that want to hoard information. They want to keep all the information. I think we build a better community by sharing information, sharing ideas, and, you know, listening to people. You know, like, you know, I ended up being a supervisor and manager at the wastewater treatment plant. But I never forgot the fact that you should go around and talk to people because some of the people just just started the job, could have new ideas and new concepts on how to do a job. And they might be able to give you an idea how to do a job much better, walking in the door. Far too often, some of those people that's, let's say, well past fifty, you know, think that we don't want to listen to young people. I think we need to listen to young people, just like I think young people need to listen to mature people. You know, we need to be doing more transgenerational stuff. We need to have everybody at the table. And everybody's voice is supposed to be important. And once I am elected, it will be appointment. It's important to me now because right now, not only am I an elected police commissioner for District Seven, I'm also president of Detroit Charter National Action Network and president of Detroit Active Retired Employee Association. You know, I sat on the board for Barton Farm Neighborhood Association and I've been active and moratorium now, you know, for like ten years. Where we've been actively fighting against people being evicted from their homes, block water shutouts. You know, I didn't become an activist yesterday. You know, I didn't, I'm not here because who my father was or who my brother is or who my uncle is. I'm here because I have a heart for the people. I think an elected official is supposed to be a servant of the people, not the other way around. Some people think that the people are there to serve them instead of them being there to serve the people. And once I'm elected, I make sure I do all I can to help as many people as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We have Ms. Underwood and then Erica Marie. Uh, Maria? And then Ms. Webb and then Carlos. And please, if you, if you want to put any questions in the chat as well.
I think this is a beautiful question. And a young lady that's speaking, I would love to, I already do mentoring for community activists. I was a former political director in New Area Detroit. And we, we did a lot of youth center programs. And as the founder of Detroit Black Women's Council, I'm already mentoring young girls in activism and how to advocate for your community. I also teach political education class through New Area Detroit once a month. And it's important that that people understand that youth feel so disconnected. I had a young lady tell me, ask me, do I have to pay to register to vote? So we are filling our jobs as leaders and, you know, we can all do better in reaching out to the youth and bringing them to the table. I'm already mentoring ladies in politics, educating the youth about politics and how it affects our lives. You know, as a single mother, our children is our future and as well as the water situation, the housing situation. I mean, people who are young, they need to understand that policy dictates how our community is ran. And we were told not to talk about politics in the church, at work, and in that nature. But we need to change that concept and we need to make sure we have the youth involved. And when I become the councilwoman, that's going to be my number one priority. I'm going to have a youth task force that does just what that young lady described, you know, making sure y'all understand where the resource is at. Properly training, advocating for those skilled trade programs, making sure that y'all, our voice is at the table when a lot of these decisions is being made. You know, we have age superiority sometimes when people feel like, because I'm a certain age. Age don't necessarily mean wisdom. So we got, I have learned so much from my son, who's eleven years old. He has the wisdom. So when it comes up to wisdom, you know, somebody that's five years old can have some wisdom. You know, they said in the Bible that a child, a child will lead. So I'm, 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 I'm just touched by what she said. And that's something that I really already currently working on, already working on that. So whether I win or lose, you can contact me. I'm already doing it. And that's something I'm going to continue to do regardless.
Thank you. Thank you, Underwood. And we have Ms. Webb and then Erica Maria.
Okay, thank you again. I was very pleased to hear some of the comments of our young people. And I do think mentoring is important. I remember a time when people would run for office or people who actually had served in office would mentor people when they knew that their time was up. You know, maybe they decided that they weren't going to run anymore. They would actually mentor someone to take their place. I don't think that's going on now. And I think that's important to let people know that, you know, you have confidence in them and to, to show them support as well. So for a young person, I would really say that it's important to mentor our young people and get them involved in what's going on in the community. I think it's sad when you find out that a young person thinks you have to pay a fee to register to vote. I've been registering in schools, young people, for at least about four years. I was a precinct delegate for a while. So I actually used to go into the schools and register young people to vote. And I think that that is so important. And to, I would really love to see a young person that goes to the school, maybe in the twelfth or the eleventh grade, to actually work with other young people in the school to get them registered. I think that would be more impactful than even having me come. So I, I, I think that youth to youth mentoring is important. But I also know that people who are of age should be also expressing what it is that they've learned and sharing that and investing in our young people to be able to get what they need. And I also know that training is important, very much so.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Webb. We have Erica, Carlos, and then Regina.
Yep. So I just wanted to say absolutely, Morgan, everything that you said is absolutely true. And so at every age, you need a mentor. I currently have mentors that are seventy-plus years old, so my age, and I consider my daughter, the twenty-year-old and the fourteen-year-old to be mentoring me because they teach me something every day. Not just TikToks, but they teach me something every day. And when I hosted my HBO documentary screening, my living room was filled with teenagers who wanted to tap in and get a mentor and learn how to make phone calls, how to process orders, how to work the backend of websites to process the T-shirt orders that people had, how to be host of events. So I absolutely understand what you mean. But in order to have a mentor, you have to be in the room, right? So somebody like myself inviting you into these spaces, learning what you're into, learning what you're not into, and then letting you follow me and learn just best practices and then connecting you with someone that's going to continue that ongoing thing. And something else you mentioned, Morgan, about foster care, youth in foster care. I actually took care of my cousin who just graduated from high school. She was a foster care child in the system. And understanding those hurdles and barriers, she had been homeschool since the age, since the fifth grade until she got with me in the ninth grade. So understanding how to connect her with programs that actually fit her. She wasn't much in 5K races. She wasn't much into Girls on the Run or cheerleading. But she was very much into computer graphics. And that was something that I didn't know much about. So mentoring her, I had to then learn more about it to connect her with other organizations and programs in Detroit. And so it's important to have a mentor. And you're right. And so just staying connected. And I want you all to stay connected. So I can help you and mentor you and find somebody or figure it out. We'll figure it out together.
Thank you. We have Carlos. Thank you for your patience, Carlos. We'll go to you. And then Regina. Then I have John Bennett. And then we'll take a question from Sarah. So Carlos?
Thank you. I wanted to talk about and to express to the representatives that having heard like from any like questions or any concerns about my proposal for the community. So I want them to speak about it. On my, the city bus that can support like youth to go to these places where they can get research and funding, which can be like, like free. So you know, youth don't have to take the money out of the pocket, you know, because there's like young people who don't like have job and don't have, you know, money like that or able. Well, that's something that you can look into it. There are not anyone, so to shore the question, I wanted to mention that, like, where are your perspective? Like, what do you think? And what are the next steps to able to do that? Is it possible? Or, yeah, I want to hear that from the representative.
Thank you, Carlos. And I have Regina next, and then John Bennett.
Okay, Carlos, I had wrote, I had written it down, but I didn't comment on it. I would like to have a community bus of van. And the only thing that would be holding us back for that is I have to check on the insurance. And with that, then we can take people places. But like I said, I just have to check on the insurance and the liability. So, so that was a good question. And it's, it's a workable thing. It's something that we can do. The only thing, like I said, the only thing that would be holding us back now would be the price of the car insurance and liability. So that was, that was a good question. And as far as mentoring, I have been mentoring for years and years. So it's just a continuation. I had given out my number before. I'll put it in the chat and I'll put my email in the chat also. So I mentor, I teach school, I have a community group. So there, and, and leadership skills, they can build their leadership skills. So I'll put my information in the chat and contact me. So we can start now. As I said before, we don't need to wait until someone becomes city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett? You have to unmute, Mr. Bennett.
I, yeah.
There you go.
Thank you. First of all, to Carlos's question, I honestly, I would need to research that a little further. I just don't want to give you any kind of answer just to appease you. I, I, I really want to dig a little deeper into that and see what we have compared, what we have already in place compared to what it is you would like to see put in place. If, if, if anything, any of the instruments we already have could, could serve to solve that issue for you as opposed to, you know, coming up with reinventing the wheel. So I would really like to delve into that a little bit deeper before I just give you any answer, just to, you know, say I answered your question. I don't want to do that. As it relates to the mentoring part of things and Morgan's question. Morgan, let me say to you that, again, I, as I said before, I, I'm the youngest of eleven. And growing up, I didn't have the type of mentorship you would think someone in a family that large would, would have. I was only the second person in my family to go to college, but only the first to finish. I finished, it took me probably ten years to get my bachelor's degree. Eventually, I went on and got another master's and then I got into the PhD program. And I didn't finish the PhD program. I just took a second master. So I know how important mentoring is to help you along your path. That's one of the things I, I've always done when I joined the police department, even before, actually, before I joined the police department. I've been mentoring for many, 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 so many years now through Don Bosco and SOSSAD, which existed when I started mentoring and volunteers in prevention. So I, I felt like I needed to be an intricate part in the lives of young people and guiding them and giving them the guidance that I didn't have when I was coming along. So I, I understand the, the importance of mentoring. And I will continue to mentor as I do current day. You know, for me, having a family of forty nieces and nephews, you, you'd think you would just concentrate on your family. But no, I've, I've always reached outside of my family circle to mentor people who don't necessarily have the things that maybe members of my family have. I have five grandchildren. I have two grandchildren. I will say this in, in brief, and I'll be done. My grandchildren, and I don't always share this story, but I think it's important to say. My grandchildren came by way of a young man I was mentoring. And he took his own life. Immediately after he took his life, his girlfriend found out she was pregnant and she had twins. They're twelve now. They'll be thirteen. And they've always, I've always been granddad to them. I just feel like you step in where you need to step in and God puts you in the place where he wants you to be. And he placed me in their life for this, this present time. And I think we all can do our part as it relates to the political end of things. I enjoy talking politics. I enjoy debating. And I enjoy mentoring young people who want to get into that arena, if you so choose. So I'm always available to, to young folks who want to be mentored, who looking for that guidance, who need some help. And that's always been, you know, my life and it will continue to be my life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have one question in the chat that anyone can speak to. And perhaps some of the people who have not spoken quite as much should begin with that. I'm going to read that question and then we're going to move toward closing. We'll give each candidate about two, two to three minutes to wrap up any last thoughts that you might want to share. But the question is from Sarah. And she says, I want to know, what are your suggestions for the repurposing of the school buildings that are owned by the city of Detroit?
And will that be to me?
Let's see. Ms. Underwood, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, because, yeah, thank you. That's an excellent question. As a member of Detroit Charter Commission, we had tried to deal with that very issue and actually create a legal pathway for Detroit residents to actually get ownership of those buildings. But so even though the city of Detroit owns the building, I think it's something with the school board had to sign off on it. But from my understanding, if somebody wants to buy the school building, But from my understanding, if somebody wants to buy the school building, they are putting restrictions on, can you turn that school building back into a school? Or back into something that had to do with education? For a lot of proposals that I actually advocated for from, for other residents that had submitted proposals that wanted to take those vacant school buildings and turn them into activity centers, recreational centers, as well as job training program centers, they've been denied. And I, I believe that we need stronger advocacy and leadership on city council to secure if it's city of Detroit property and it's owned by the city of Detroit and if it's under the Detroit Building Authority, because that's where a lot of them are, that we need to look at Detroit Building Authority. And that's the reason why I put in, as the Chair of Economic Growth and Development Subcommittee, as, as a member of the Detroit Charter Commission, I put, advocated for a policy and to regulate all private authorities. Because when you're talking about buying those old school buildings or any commercial property in the city of Detroit, a lot of people don't know that's under the jurisdiction of a private authority and they dictate who gets to buy that or not. So we need strong leadership on city council to, and, and have the citizens submit their proposal and advocate for the relief of those school buildings out from the Detroit Building Authority and, and take the Detroit Building Authority and let them continue to do what they used to do is do capital improvement projects and get them out of real estate and let that come back into the internal, external operation of city government. And so until that happens, people can say whatever they want to say. Until that happens, until we deal with the privatization of city services and land, no real effort to actually the citizens will make until that is addressed. And they have to be done through city council and they have to be done with strong leadership. And the, the issue is that the bankruptcy, they impact our city in ways that you can imagine. And when it comes up to it, all our land, all city-owned property is under a private board authority and they dictate who can buy it and who cannot buy it. And I, and I seek to change that, whether I'm on council or not, I seek to change that. Thank you.
Now, I have Ms. Ross, Mr. Davis, and Ms. Webb all have their hands up. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, mine is, mine is real short because basically Joanna had said most of what I was going to say. But the thing is, if we could get the building, no, I'm not going to say if, when we get the buildings. Because as a city council person, I will go to the other city council people. We will have to vote on it, negotiate on it. And then when we do get the building, then I would like to see just a, a activity center, activity center inside of the building, a learning center inside of the building, training, where maybe even, I don't know if we could get one there. And it might be one there already, a swimming, swimming area and other recreational activities. So a lot of things that we can do with those buildings. And one of the things that I have been talking to people in the neighborhood, some of the things that they would like to see, and I talked about it too, is having small businesses inside of those schools. So the, that, those are great ideas. They can be changed. They will be changed. Because it doesn't make sense to have those buildings just sitting there going to waste when we could be using those in the community for all the things that I mentioned before. So that's good. That's what we'll do. I know time.
So I have Ms. Webb, Mr. Davis, and Mr. Durhill Hall.
If you're giving me that, I would like to say that when I, when I was just in a meeting today, we were talking about that because I really feel that it's a shame how we have so many vacant schools. And there is an opportunity there. They could be like a co-op hub where young people can learn skill. We could make it a homeless shelter for people. Because I see people out begging all the time and I know that there is a need there for people to have someplace to stay. So we could have something like that. We could even have a recreational center for our young people because that is something I've been fighting for, for years. And all of that is just opportunities that we could have for our community. And I'm sure that there are a lot more that could be put out there. So there is no reason why we should have all of these vacant buildings. Not only schools, but I think about the AMC building off of Plymouth near Hubble. That's a humongous place. Somebody said it should be a shopping center. You know, I, I, I just don't understand why we can't repurpose these places immediately instead of letting them become monstrosities in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis? You're muted, Mr. Davis. You have to unmute.
Sorry about that. Well, that's a very good question. You know, my, my approach might be slightly different than my, my fellow people that's running in that these schools, most of these schools, the school system, the Detroit school system lost them because of the city. Okay, well, as I was saying, most of these schools. And.
So Stephen, you want to?
Yeah, I'm trying to find out who it is.
Well, so Shay, you want to?
I think I got it.
So.
Can I continue?
Oh, no, one minute, please.
Okay.
So, so.